Okay, well, good evening, everyone. It is 7:03. We'll call the meeting to order. Our January 27th, 2025 meeting, welcome and good evening to all of you. All members are present. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we begin, I do want to ask if you'll join me briefly in a moment of silence. Since our last meeting, we've lost a few beloved members of our community, each of which have served our community with distinction. First, Francis Dean Hancock passed away on January 13th. Fran was raised in Wilmington, his Wilmington class, high school class of 1966. After upon graduating, he joined the United States Marine and served bravely during the Vietnam War. In 1982, Fran began his career with the Wilmington Police Department and was a longtime member of the tactical police force. He served our community with a calm and strong presence for nearly 30 years. Also, on the 14th of January, we lost Roger J. Lassard, who passed away peacefully on the 14th. He served our community in several capacities in various boards throughout the years and retired as Superintendent of Public Buildings and served our town for many, many years. And finally, an equally sad, we lost a longtime resident who passed away on the 14th of January, a 1953 graduate of Wilmington High School, C.C. Miller passed away and having served the town, working in the public schools as a custodian. And so, on behalf of a grateful town, we want to send our condolences to their families. And I ask that you please join me in a moment of silence as we remember these beloved members of our community. Mr. Manager, we'll begin with the transmitting of Treasury warrants.
Yep.
Okay. We have Treasury warrants 2529, 2529W, 2529T, 2529S, 2530, 2530W, 2530T. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. We have minutes to approve from January 13th of this year. Would anybody like to offer a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor? It is also unanimous. Thank you. And so, tonight, we will begin, before we hear our presentation, we do have a public hearing that we will attend to. We want to welcome this evening Attorney Robert Peterson on behalf of Michael's Place. This is going to be a public hearing relative to request for an all alcohol license. So, please, gentlemen, if you'd like to come forward, I'll say good evening to both of you, and then I'll ask the board if anybody would be inclined to make a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Public hearing is now open. Gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Bendel. Mr. Slagel, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Attorney Robert G. Peterson Senior for the applicant, Michael McCoy, doing business as Michael's Place. You may know it now currently as The Real McCoy. I'm not sure that Mr. McCoy needs an introduction to anyone. He previously held a liquor license at this location for 19 years and gave it up when he originally sold the business. As you all are aware, he's out back up and running, currently running as a breakfast operation, would like to expand his hours very shortly, still getting his feet wet with the breakfast and lunch business. And we're here before the board this morning, this evening, to request an all alcohol beverage license for the premises.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. McCoy, want to welcome me back? My longtime colleague, no stranger to this room, of course. Welcome back. Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mr. De Palma.
Yes. Do you know what hours you're going to be working, or are you going to be moving along at a pace?
Right now, I'm just basically with the Attorney Robert Peterson, saying I'm just trying to get my feet wet a little bit. I mean, I'm no stranger to the restaurant business. I own and operated Michael's Place from 1984 to 2015 until I sold it. I had a 31-year track record of success. I had a 19-year consecutive year, have a full liquor license at the time, and I absolutely plan on expanding. One thing I do is I listen, I listen to my customers. Many of the customers have asked, you know, if I could try to get a liquor license, and Grandma might want a Bloody Mary, and somebody might want, what is it, Kevin?
The motion.
The Champagne cocktails, what movie was that, right? Godfather II. But anyway, that was that. So, yeah, and to believe it or not, I don't drink, you know? So, you know, but that's what I plan on doing, and I plan on absolutely expanding the hours. And, you know, just, you know, I'm just taking it slow. I just, I've only been in business just a tad over four months. I want to conquer the breakfast lunch business, I just don't want to rush into it. But that is the goal, to expand the hours, absolutely.
Thank you. I've been to your establishment a number of times, and your food is absolutely terrific.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palma. Would anyone else, questions or comments?
I think he's conquered the breakfast.
Yeah.
I will. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Very good.
That sounds good. Thank you very much.
It's really not the breakfast he's concerned about, Kevin. It's the extended hours that he's going to have to work.
As long as we get the pizza.
Yeah, that's a big request. I didn't tell you. Thank you. Definitely is on the forefront.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else from the board, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward from the public and be heard on this particular matter? Okay. All right, then. There's only two things left to do. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and then we'll take the vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. West. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. De Palma. All those in favor? It is unanimous. The public hearing is now closed, and we will, I will entertain a motion to grant the license request.
So moved.
Second? Nope, sorry.
Thank you very much. Motion's been made and doubly seconded. Is there any discussion? Other than we want to wish you well and thank you for being here and good luck.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor? It is unanimous.
Questions?
Best of luck.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Dalton, everything is squared away in terms of paperwork? We're all set? Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I leave, I want to take a moment to thank Ms. Dalton for her assistance. I've done a lot of these license applications in a lot of different places, and when the person processing the application has a grasp of the process, it just makes it so much easier. And I just wanted to personally thank her.
Thank you. I agree. Totally agree. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, good evening.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice night. Thank you.
You too.
As well. Thank you.
Bring this home and study it.
All right.
Have a good night, everybody.
You have to take care. Good luck. All right. A few minutes ahead of schedule, and so, we'll make him sweat it out for four more minutes. This is his first presentation, so we want to make sure he's ready. Give him this final four minutes to prepare. But tonight is the annual presentation of the proposed budget. Tonight is the FY '26 budget. It'll be Mr. Slagel's very first presentation, so I promise to be nice to you this evening. This is your first, but we want to thank you in advance for this presentation that you're about to give. I want to especially thank you and all of your staff, who I know have put a lot of time and effort in preparing for tonight's presentation. I want to thank our IT staff and our director, John O'Neill, who's helped us. We're going to have some visuals on the screen, and there will be documentation on the web after we have this presentation tonight. I want to thank, and I want to recognize, a number of people who are in the room, our Assistant Town Manager, our Town Accountant is here this evening, our Superintendent of Schools, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, my esteemed colleagues on the School Committee and the Finance Committee, along with our Chief of Police. I want to thank you all for being here, as well as my, our, my fellow residents. And I'm sure I may have missed somebody, and people will be coming in and out of the room, but thank you all for being here, and thanks to our friends at WCTV for broadcasting live, so that everyone in town can see the proposed budget for FY '26. And with that, I'll turn it over to the manager. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. I want to make a quick statement before I start with the official presentation, which is, to echo what the chair had mentioned, I would really like to thank all of the individuals in town who worked to put this budget together. It's obviously, if anybody's taken a look at the, at the package that they received, can tell this is not the work that one person could do. It certainly took a lot of very dedicated department heads, working very hard to, to put this together. I want to issue a special thanks to Judy O'Connell, who sat through all the budget meetings and certainly helped me out, and also Steph Reilly-Frentira, who's our Chief Financial Officer, who worked tirelessly to, to get all these documents in the shape, to put them, to put the budget, and, and help the department heads get their, their specific documents ready. So I really want to thank everybody. So, without further ado, we will be talking about the fiscal year '26 budget for, here in Wilmington. The first thing I wanted to talk about was the, the pillars that underline this budget. I think it's important for the public and for the boards to know the, the things that we put forward as important and as key ideas behind the formation of this budget. The first is to maintain appropriate staffing levels in our town departments while continuing fiscally responsible budgeting. This is a balancing act that every town has to, to take, and it's very crucial every year to sit down with staff, sit down with the department heads, and try to balance out the resources that the town has with the needs of the departments to be able to do the work of the town and appropriately serve our residents. The second pillar is to support our public safety staff in the Police, Fire, and Public Works Departments. These are three kind of critical departments that impact our citizens the very most and in the most critical times. So it's really crucial that we keep those in mind when we're formulating our annual budgets. The third is to work to renovate and update our municipal buildings and infrastructure. I think everyone can appreciate that the town has taken really great strides over the last couple of years in this endeavor with the new senior center that, you know, we're having a grand opening on Valentine's Day, and the new Town Hall School Administration Building, which seems to be getting quicker, quicker every time I look at it and more finished. And continuing that work is another one of the pillars of the budgeting process. Pillar number four is to plan for a safe, modern educational experience for Wilmington schoolchildren. So this is, I think education is one of the critical things that every town does, whether they do it regionally or whether they do it through their own school system, keeping in mind that appropriately funding the schools is another key, key piece of the budgeting process. So, all that being said, let's look at the budget by the numbers. The top line here is kind of the crucial one for comparing a year-over-year budget. That's the non-capital budget. So our non-capital budget in FY 2025 was $132,571, and in FY '26, the non-capital budget comes in at $140,000, $140,021,000. The delta between those two numbers is a little bit less than $6.5 million, which makes the total increase 4.82%. At the beginning of the budgeting process, we set a target to have the total budget delta be less than 5%. We received it, we achieved it, so we were happy with that number. The critical difference between this budget and the FY '25 budget, for reasons I'll explain later in the, in the program, is the, the robust capital proposals that we've put forward in FY '26. So, we put forward a proposal in the budget to dedicate an additional $2 million into capital stabilization, and we are putting in an additional capital expenses of $8.6 million. We'll go into greater detail into those specifics as we move forward, but these capital expenditures are really critical in moving forward some of the pillars that we talked about earlier. That brings the total budget, proposed budget for FY '26 to $154,69,492. And so, that's the budget by the numbers. There are some factors that impacted this budget, and they're important to know because they, they do add some detail into the, the numbers that are in front of you. The first is the non-union COLAs from FY '25 and '26. When the temporary town manager was putting forward his FY '25 budget, he was still in negotiations with several unions and hadn't reached successful collective bargaining with those unions. And so, as such, he did not include a management or non-union COLA in the FY '25 budget proposal. So those numbers are not reflected. If you look through the budget, you'll see there are some department heads that are, were paid exactly the same year-over-year, and that's because they were, they were at their top step, and their COLA wasn't in that budget. At this point in time, we did include the FY '26 COLA in this budget. So the budget, the FY '26 budget reflects both the FY '25 COLA that wasn't there last year and the FY '26 COLA that is there this year. So that's an important thing to note, and that can create what looks like a slightly larger difference between FY '25 and '26 than is actually reflected in the, in the underlying budget for this fiscal year. The second is, there's an increase in general liability insurance of 10%. We worked with our liability insurance provider. We do anticipate that in future years, this will be, be reduced. Unfortunately, there were some, some large claims that we had against our, our insurance that were still on the books as of the time they quoted us for FY '26. The third is increase in health insurance of 8%. Now, I, I, to be honest to folks, I am actually happy that we're in the single digits. Lots of municipalities are facing increases in the double digits. When I was at the MMA over the weekend, Maya, who generally has a fairly good track record of keeping their, their rates relatively low, informed their members that their average rate increase was going to be almost 15%, so 14.8%. They were ranging between 9.9 and 19.9 in the increases at Maya. So for us to get an 8% increase, I'm, I was actually relieved that we were in the single digits. This is actually a conservative estimate. Our, we haven't signed the, the final contract for the renewal of our, of our health insurance, in part because the way that health insurance is budgeted, they're looking at their last 24 months. Our furthest 24 months had some high claims, and so, the hope is if we wait a couple of months and have those months drop off with some lower claim months, that we'll be able to get an insurance rate that's less than eight. But for conservative budgeting purposes, we put it in at 8%. The other factors, obviously, increase in contractual and other services. We'll talk a little bit about these increases later in the presentation, but as, as folks are aware, there are collective bargaining agreements that have contractual steps and, and COLAs in them, and there have been several contracts that have been negotiated by the town during this fiscal year that materially impact the budget, and there's some other issues that we'll bring up going forward. The other thing to, just to make folks aware, is that Wilmington is a very early budgeting municipality. Lots of different municipalities don't come up with their budgets for a couple of months. What that means is we're kind of ahead of the curve with respect to some of the other entities that we're relying on. So, the state released their first cherry sheets on Friday. Those cherry sheets are obviously not reflected in the budget proposal that you had, and those are just the governor's cherry sheets and obviously not the, either the houses or the senates. So, the, that cherry, the cherry sheet numbers are still subject to flux. In addition, we're a little bit ahead of Shawshing Tech, so we don't have final numbers from, from the tech as to their budget, and we have a placeholder. So, those, the information will obviously affect this proposed budget, and hopefully we've put the right numbers in to be able to, to, to move forward. But we'll obviously update everyone when we get those final numbers. So, I wanted to highlight the budget changes. For folks who had the chance to get the, my, my memo in, in front of the budget, and you've, you've looked at it, this is not going to be anything new to you, but for folks who haven't, I'll be going through the departments and some of the specific things that are, that I wanted to kind of talk about in detail, I'll, I'll put on the screen. So, general government budgets were mostly level funded, except for salaries and contractual There are a couple that are outside of that because of staffing increases. So the first is the Town Clerk's, Town Clerk's Office, which included one additional staff, a senior clerk. The reasoning for that was needed to assist with public records and digitization. For folks who aren't aware, the public records law was changed a few years ago to provide a kind of heightened requirements to municipalities for responding to public records. Since COVID, many municipalities, including Wilmington, have seen explosion of increase in public records requests that are coming to the town. In Wilmington, like in many places, the Town Clerk's Office is the record officer for the entire town, and therefore, all of the public records requests to every town department come in through the clerk's office. So, unfortunately, this has become the kind of workflow that demands, you know, we put additional resources towards it. The second piece is, unfortunately, Wilmington's a little bit behind it, behind the times in getting our documents digitized. So, one of the things, for folks who have peeked ahead at the capital plan, you'll see that there's, the Town Manager's Office has a capital request for a digitization project over the next five years, and this would be the individual who would likely be spearheading that or providing the resources to allow that to be spearheaded through the clerk's office. The second general government department that sees a change is the IT Department. This is to add what I call, in, in my mind, a munis tech. I believe we're going to have some more generic language in the title to allow for us to, for, for John O'Neill, who's the director, to have some flexibility over responsibilities. But one of the things that it's become obvious over the last, over the time that the, the town has been working on munis and during my seven months here, is we have a very lean, high-functioning IT department, but they're running very lean, and most municipalities that run munis have at least one individual, if not more, in their IT department that's just tasked with doing the maintaining and troubleshooting of the munis system. So that would be what this technician is proposed for. If we move on to public safety, the Police Department did not put in for any additional staff. We put, did put in some important capital projects, including some new cruisers, replacement for the aging community policing trailer, and TASER replacement, and animal control, which falls under the PD, had a, only a contractual increase. In addition, the, the Fire Department also worked really hard to level fund their budget. They did have, again, some important capital projects, but with respect to the salary lines, they were looking at contractual increases and worked hard to maintain their, their expense lines. So I really think that the chief spoke, did a very good job in, in working through this process to, to get to that result. The DPW budget does show some significant increases due to contractual agreements. We'll talk about it specifically later, but the trash contract was a main driver for their non-salary increases. In order to make sure that the town was getting the best bang for its buck, we did put out the trash contract for a public bid, even though we weren't required to under mass general laws. The town got three bids. We did negotiate with the two lowest bidders, as we were allowed to for trash contracts, and ended up maintaining the contract with Casella. However, that did come with a significant increase of a little over $300,000. Community development, the Board of Health, Planning and Conservation, and the Building Inspector's Offices all show only contractual increases in their payroll departments, so I appreciate them for, for working through the budget to, to keep things level. The other major department that has some, some increases we need to talk about is going to be public buildings. So, for staffing increases, the Public Buildings Department is, is requesting, as part of this budget, two new employees. The first is a G2 custodian. The reasoning for that G2 custodian is to cover the additional square footage in the new senior center and Town Hall. Our public buildings, like most custodial departments, operates on a square footage basis, and so, the additional square footage in those two departments does mandate a kind of a change in, in assignment that will result in the need for one extra G2 custodian. I will say that that's actually was less than was originally asked for, but when we went through all of the outstanding positions and, and, and made some, some tweaks, Dennis Kelly, who's the, the head of Public Buildings, and I came to the determination that one G2 custodian, once all the other puzzle pieces moved around, would be what we needed. The second is something that was in the Public Buildings Department for many years, but got dropped from the budget a few years ago, which is a painter. Doesn't mean that painting doesn't happen in our public buildings. It means that the staff for our public buildings does painting when the weather is not appropriate for something else that they're doing, kind of as a, as a, if we have time, we'll do painting, or when the weather's bad, we'll do painting. Unfortunately, we've got 900,000 square feet of space over 28 buildings, and we, Dennis believes, and I agree with him, that we need to have an individual who has this as their primary responsibility and not backup responsibility. And I think that will allow us to freshen up some of our older buildings and, and make the spaces more appropriate for the uses they're having these days. With human services, our veteran services had a, you know, a small increase in expenses and contractual salary increases. You know, Lou and his staff have worked really hard to find alternate sources of funding for a lot of the veterans, and so they're not impacting the town's veterans funding, and I really want to credit him for, for being able to pull that off. Elderly services, although Terry is changing buildings or maintaining staffing at this, at this point in time, although I think she and I both understand that that's a more of a holding pattern to see how the new building shakes out, and we'll be talking later on in this calendar year about what, if any, changes are going to be needed to, to meet the requirements of that building. But we didn't want to start off without getting, the lay of the land is how that building's usage is happening. Recreation just has minor increases in payroll and program supplies. The vast majority of recreation's budget comes from the revolving fund, so there's only some small budgeting that shows up in the general fund, and the revolving fund, where the payment for all programs come in, and then the, the cost for all those program employees is paid out of, holds, does most of the work for recreation. Historical Commission, there's a, an increase for the contractual increase in payroll for the individual who works at the, at the Hardin Tavern. And then, the library budget increased due to payroll contractual increments of books and library materials. The library budget's one, where we got some information from the state, maybe a small tweak in the library budget. Like, like other budget changes that we'll be making, moving forward, when we get the clarified numbers from the state, we'll let folks know as soon as possible. Some other budget changes. Contractual changes. So, as I discussed, the town trash contract went onto a public bid, a significant increase of $316,000, or 12.76%. So that, that's the driver. So that's the driver for DPW's salary increase, as I mentioned earlier. On the positive side, as I'm sure some members of the FINCOM will be happy to hear, we have a reduction in cost for the Soft Right financial software, thanks to Stephanie Frontera and John O'Neill, working and identifying the Soft Right software that we're actually continuing to use. We're going to have a 65% reduction in that cost, which is going to save us about $38,000. Hopefully that offset, will offset a portion of the cost for the munis tech. That leaves our Soft Right bill for this year at about $20,000, and hopefully this is the last year that we pay it, but we'll keep our fingers crossed. The other changes, and these are important changes that were in the Public Works budget, have to do with heating systems. With the two new buildings coming online, for folks who aren't intimately aware with them, they are all electric buildings, and so aren't going to be having any other fuel sources for heating. As such, public buildings dropped the fuel heating expenses in their expense line and increased the electric for town buildings in their expense line. But obviously, we haven't operated those buildings yet. So the numbers that we have in there are conservative estimates that Dennis is making based on his best information, but we'll have to be able to be willing to be flexible about those as we have those buildings come online and see what the actual costs are With respect to education, as I mentioned, we do not have a final budget from Shawshene Tech, so hopefully we'll be getting that in the coming weeks, and we'll be able to finalize our number for them. With respect to the operating budget for the school department, I met multiple times with the superintendent and the business manager regarding their budget, and we all came to an agreement that an increase of 4% was reasonable, given the impacts of special education, transportation, and contractual salary costs for FY '26. And so that is where the school came in for their increase, at a 4% increase for the buildings in public schools. The other major portion of this budget, as we talked about earlier, is the Capital Improvement Plan. I wanted to make it clear to folks that the increase we're seeing year over year in the Capital Improvement Plan is coming from a few discrete projects. First, it's important to note that last year's capital plan was fairly lean, one of the leanest in a few years. The temporary town manager came in and his mandate was to fund the critically needed capital expenses, but to allow a new administration to come in and make determinations about further capital expenses that folks felt could be put off a year. So the kind of main driver of the increase in the capital expense, Capital Improvement Plan, is the first tranche of funding for the North Wilmington Fire Substation. So we are expending $3.5 million in free cash as the first sort of payment towards the North Wilmington Substation. We will be going out with an RFP in the coming weeks and hope to, well, we will have a location prior to town meeting, hopefully. And so, and with the feasibility study, we'll be able to get some more specifics, but we did want to have this money set aside. The future funding for the substation will likely come in FY '27. The second large expense in our Capital Improvement Plan is window replacement at the West Intermediate School. For those who are familiar with the West, the windows have needed replacement for a while. The Public Buildings Department made the determination to delay on this until there was a final option selected for the elementary school, in the off-chance that somehow the West had somehow entered into the equation as to what was going to be done with this proposed elementary school. Since it is, obviously for folks who are aware, not part of the plan for this first elementary school, the windows do need to be replaced. We'll actually be funding this from the excess in the assessors overlay fund. So folks who pay close attention to the budget are aware that every year, some funds are set aside for the assessors to fund abatements. I will say that Karen and her team have done a phenomenal job over the past decade or so in limiting our ATB cases, our appellate tax board cases, in not issuing a substantial amount of abatements and maintaining the town's liability for abatements very low. And so right now, that account has some excess funds. And so our plan is to use 2.75 million of those excess funds to fund that window replacement, since it's needed, and hopefully we'll be able to get that off the ground as soon as The third, as I mentioned earlier, is a pumper for the fire department, $950,000. I know this sounds like a large number, and I appreciate that the town has done a lot to fund the fire department over the past few years in their capital plans. The reality is that the town's equipment audit is going to come, and one of our engines is likely to be too old to be counted going forward. That's likely to happen in five years, and for those who know about ordering fire equipment, you have to order things five years in advance now. So this pumper is going to be needed right around the FY '29, FY '30 deadline, and in order to do that, we have to put it in the capital plan now. That's also being funded out of free cash. The final thing is, the final large item is the Wilmington High School turf field replacement. Additionally, initially, this was held as a $1 million hold in the capital plan and went out to bid during this fiscal year, and we're excited to report that we got, you know, an excellent scope of bids back that came in significantly less than I think Jamie had planned for. And so we're going to be able to fund that turf field replacement also with free cash. These next two things are in the capital plan. It's important to note that they don't show up in the budget because they're not being funded by either free cash or by the general fund. But I wanted to make folks aware of the infrastructure improvements that we're doing in the water and sewer funds. So first is a $1.2 million industrial way pump station upgrade in the sewer fund that's critically needed infrastructure, and so that's going to be going forward. The second is the Route 38 water main replacement. These have been two things that have been planned for a few years, and now the separate enterprise funds are ready to move forward with those projects, and I wanted to make folks aware of that. And finally, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to be spending an additional $2 million to fund capital stabilization. The idea behind this is to give the town and the select board and the FINCOM as many options as possible coming into the discussion about the proposed new pre-K through 5 school at the north site. By setting aside these funding now into capital stabilization, if it was the will of the town to use some of that funds to offset the cost of the school, we'd be able to take it out in the fall at the same time as the vote on the school. So the, it's important to note kind of some of my experiences since I've come on board. One of the main questions that I have received, both as part of the school building committee process for the Wildwood School Building Committee, and also outside of that process, is whether or not the town has a plan for handling its school or town building infrastructure into the future. And for every town, this is, you know, a crisis point, and I want to let the folks in this room and who are watching at home know that I take those questions really seriously. So as such, I've taken upon myself to make sure that, to go through the facilities master plan, to evaluate with the department heads, the current building infrastructure that we've had, and to think critically about the requirements of the town going forward for the next 50 years or so, in what our residents will need and expect with respect to building infrastructure. And so as a foundation for that, I think there's a couple of things that I, a couple of thoughts I thought was important to share. The first is that Wilmington is in the business of education. Like every town in Massachusetts, we will need to provide for schools for our residents going forward, and that's going to be happening as long as Wilmington exists. We're going to have to make sure that we have schools for our kids. At the same time, Wilmington also needs to plan for our municipal building needs for the next generation. The prior administration, this select board, and the FINCOM have taken huge steps to do that in pushing forward the senior center plan and the new town hall plan. And I think those are amazing starting points for kind of a long-term building plan and give a real solid foundation to the town's municipal infrastructure going forward. I do believe that these two needs are not necessarily competing needs. We need to do both of these things at the same time, and I do believe that this can be accomplished while respecting the tax concerns of our citizens. So after having discussed it with many members of the select board, with members of other boards and commissions in town, with the financial folks on staff, I say that though we will need a debt exclusion for the proposed pre-K through 5 elementary school at the north site, with proper timing and with the help of the MSBA, we can, as a town, build a second pre-K through 5 elementary school within the existing budget, without the need for a debt exclusion or an override. I think that's a critical piece of information that the town needs to know, because as part of the school building committee, and I know there are several members on the board and in the audience who are on that committee, one of the first questions that I get when somebody is asking about the elementary school project that's been proposed is, well, what about the rest of the elementary schools? And I'll explain the specifics about that in just a moment. But once that's accomplished, this will allow us to update our municipal infrastructure using our strong bond rating at free cash. And I think that that's, you know, that's critical to our long-term plan. So in general terms, this is what that plan would look like. There's a proposed pre-K through 5 at the north site. Whether we use some capital stabilization or some free cash to lower the tax impact of that to our residents, it's going to require a debt exclusion to get that done. The proposal has been for a 30-year debt exclusion to go from 2026 to 2056. The second pre-K through 5 would need to replace, a potential project would need to replace the butt well, the Shawshene in the West. The way that this works is because municipalities are required, under the current statutory construction, to pay off their outstanding pension liability by 2036. The town has been paying extra towards that outstanding pension liability, which has lowered our overall payments. But what that means is that in 2036, I believe at this point in time, our payment in 2036 is right around $14 million. But we'll have $14 million that will no longer be needed on the budget to pay that outstanding pension liability. Assuming a proposed pre-K through 5 at the north site goes as per the current schedule, that means they'd be operating the building in the 2029 to 2030 range. If we turned around and into early 2030s, got into the MSBA program again, that would likely time so that our first payments on a second, on a second elementary school would line up pretty closely to the time when we would no longer be required to pay that large chunk of money towards our outstanding pension liability, which would mean we could absorb the cost for that, for a second school within the existing tax levy. It's also important to note that that's the same time that the high school debt will be rolling off the books, which is in 2036. If we followed that plan, it would mean that the payments for that second school would be in the tax levy from 2036 to 2066. Just to, for those of us who are going to be around, Mr. Bendel, until after that, this would line up pretty closely with the needs for the middle school and the high school. So the middle school, if you plan to have them, you know, a renovation or a construction on a middle school project, given the age of the middle school, right around the mid-2050s is when you'd want to be going into MSBA to try to get that done. The proposed pre-K at the north site debt exclusion would be rolling off the books in 2056, and that would allow, you know, a potential debt exclusion without increasing the actual, the taxes people paid year over year to go in 2056 for a middle school project. And then, again, Lil, you'll probably be the only one here for this, the high school plan for renovation in 2066. This would mean in 2066, if we did as I would hope the town can do, and take the entirety of that, of that $13 million and set it aside for school projects, that we would have rolling off the books in 2066, about $13 million in debt, that you could then turn towards a high school renovation or construction. Now, we don't know what is going to exist at that time and what the realities are going to look like, but this is a kind of a long-term plan. If we are operating four schools, we're likely going to have to be paying for two at a time. And if we can pay for one through the tax levy and one through a debt exclusion, it will significantly lower the impact of tax increases on residents over the course of that cycle. What this allows us to do on the town side is, you know, the North Wilmington Fire Substation. So we put aside in this budget a proposed $3.5 million for the first kind of like payment towards that substation in 2026, with the second payment coming in 2027. Public Works is, we would tentatively scheduling a feasibility study for a new DPW barn in approximately 2028 or 2029, with the idea that we could set aside funding for that around, you know, the 2029, 2030. And then we would tentatively schedule a feasibility study for a potential library renovation in 2031 or 2032, with the idea that in the mid-2030s, we could fund that capital project, and we'd be in a position where the vast majority of our municipal buildings are upgraded. There are obviously other considerations to take into account in a long-term building plan like this. The public safety building is one, the public buildings home is another, but I do think this provides a general roadmap for the town in the idea of moving forward our municipal So in conclusion, I'd like to say that this was a very well-thought-out budget at every level. The department has worked extraordinarily hard to meet the requests that were made of them, to put forward reasonable, thoughtful requests for their departments. I think this, there's four new positions in the budget at this time. They all come in locations that provide immediate benefits to the town and/or are really needed to maintain our really needed to maintain our efficiency going forward. And I think, I appreciate the chance given to me by the board to present this budget. And I thank you all for your time.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Appreciate all your time and effort to put this presentation together. And again, I want to, excuse me, thank your staff as well. I just, a couple initial reactions that I have is a couple of things that I'm confident of. Number one, I'm confident that tonight's presentation is just the beginning and may be the easiest part of what will be this budget process. I'm sure over the coming weeks that there'll be a lot of questions and commentary about this. I'm confident that the finance committee will do an excellent job in the coming weeks of combing over this. I'm confident that you'll hear from not only board members but residents with good questions. And I'm confident that this is the first time anyone's mentioned 2066. In this room or any other meeting in town. So Beverly, make sure that's reflected in the minutes. I don't know if it's a good thing or I should be scared that you're projecting all the way out to 2066. I'll take the optimistic look at it. But thank you in all seriousness. And again, this will be, I can tell you, you will get some tough questions, you know, from the proposed percentage increase to the four additional hires, you know, in a year when costs are up for everybody, rates are up, everybody just got a big tax bill increase for residents. And so, I would imagine that you will find out really quickly that we have residents that really pay close attention, and they ask really good questions, and I'm grateful that they do. But the last thing that I'm confident in is that I think that you're the right man to answer all those questions. So I look forward to you explaining all these things to our town, and I really, once again, appreciate all the work you've done here tonight.
Thank you.
And with that, I will first open it up to any members of the board who may have a question or a comm, initial reaction. Again, just so everybody's aware, this is the first time that board members have received this on Friday night, first time we're seeing it. Every resident will be getting this information, and it will be available online as well in the coming days. So everybody is encouraged to take a look at it. This is just the beginning of the budget process. As I mentioned, starting tomorrow night, the finance committee will begin their season combing through the budget, page by page, line by line, and it's a great opportunity for people to come and ask questions. And I know the finance committee always asks very good questions themselves. So that, I look forward to that. Leading up to March, we'll have a joint hearing here at town hall, and then finally, in the beginning of May, where the residents will make their decision on the budget and other issues in early May at town meeting. So this is just the kickoff, if you will. But if anybody on the board has initial reactions, please feel free.
I've, I can't put my head around 2066. That's all I got to say.
I just want to say, just on, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I just, I like that plan, you know, outline. I know it goes to 2066, but I think that's really important to see how it rolls and that, you know, every, with the schools, that it's almost like a cycle, you know? And I think it's important for residents to, you know, see. And like you said, we never know what's going to happen, but it's nice to see it kind of in black and white, that, you know, we'll be ending one, you know, project, and that money will be available to put towards the schools. And so, you know, we won't have to do the debt exclusions and overrides. So thank you for that. It all, and I know it wasn't easy to do that, but when I looked at, looked at it the first time, I was thinking, why didn't somebody else come up with this before? So I appreciate it, that you dug into that enough, because I think that's a really good piece of information for the residents.
Thank you.
And I too. I'm looking forward to seeing the 2066 budget here. Probably be on that side or maybe down the street somewhere, but in either case, I appreciate the fact that you're far-reaching and looking at, not only just looking at our capital needs throughout the next, you know, 30-odd years, but, you know, ideas on funding sources that'll help pay for it. I think that, you know, I'm a fiscal conservative, so I know that, you know, people like myself will be out there saying, okay, great, it's great that we're doing these capital improvements, but how do we balance the tax levy with capital improvement? So it'd be interesting to see, as we go forward, to see what transpires. But again, I do appreciate you and the fact that, and all the staff that helped prepare this document, and look forward to hearing the finance committee and the residents and everybody make, you know, whatever comments, and hopefully we get to town meeting unscathed and we go forward.
Mr. Kira?
Manager. Look, I'm not as concerned as my colleagues are with 2066. I won't be here then, so. But I am here now in FY 2026. A little bit of a sticker shock when I see that the budget's increased 12.46% on behalf of the residents. I don't know how that's going to impact the tax base at this point in time, but it seems to be fairly high, in my view. A question, I noticed that under the Department of Public Works and Water Department, you had included a new hire for parks and grounds, but when you did your proposal up on the screen there, I didn't see that individual there. I saw, I saw someone for the clerk's office, the IT, and two people for public buildings, a janitor and a, or custodian, and a painter. But I noticed in, it will be asking for one new full-time under parks and grounds. So is that eliminated?
Yes, that's, that was for, that was last year. That was asked for last year. I apologize.
I'm a little concerned, and I'm sure you'll address this, about setting aside $3.5 million for a substation that we have no property for. I am absolutely in favor of a substation, for sure. And I think it's most important that we have it. We've had this discussion, and I've even given you some ideas and recommendations of where to look for land. But would it make more sense, in my eyes, to put that $3.5 in the capital stabilization fund rather than in a substation that we have no location for? And that way there, as you said, and just to quote you, you said, "as many options as possible," because you're adding $2 million to the current capitalization fund. So it would make more sense to me that you take that $3.5 and put it into that fund to give you multiple options, including a fire substation. Just, just an observation. Again, and I mentioned, going through the budget, I'm a little disappointed that we're still funding $1 million for OPEP. I think it's, right now, not a good spending of the town's money at this point in time. I think you can reduce that by half. I also think that putting, I think, $1.5 million to the retirement fund is a little excessive as well. But I'm sure that, it will be interesting to watch the finance committee and their views. Now, last year, we had a feasibility study article put in for around $600,000 for a substation, and now we're putting it with, with no place to go. And now we're putting in $3.5 million. Do we know what's happening with that feasibility study for the $600,000 that the residents put forward from last year?
Yeah, so the RFP is being reviewed, and I'm hopeful that it'll go out in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, so you're doing the RFP for that. The FY 25, FY 26, a non-union and COLA, does that include retro, or is that prospectively going forward?
No, so.
No, because there was a large increases in there.
Yeah, so.
And again, well-deserved, and I don't begrudge anybody a raise, I just want people to know.
Yeah, no, and there's, there's no, there was no error by any of its part by it not being in here. When Lou was negotiating with unions, in an effort to maintain the town's flexibility and its position, he didn't want to proactively set a rate for the department heads, because then the unions would use that to, as a bargaining tool. So he deferred the setting of that rate until after the budget was set. And so, the numbers that are reflected in there included, if a department head was eligible for a step raise, or a non-union employee was eligible for a step raise, that was included in the budget, because that's contractual. But they did not include a COLA. So for some department heads, if you look from FY 24 to FY 26, it's the same number. They obviously weren't paid the same number in FY, from, I'm sorry, from FY 24 to FY 25. They obviously weren't paid the same number. They did get that management COLA, it just wasn't reflected in the budget, because it was delayed until after Lou had negotiated with the unions and set those, the COLAs for the union, so that it couldn't be used against the town in an affirmative manner.
And it's good to see that soft right is on its way out the door, and Munis is coming in. We still have the contract. It kind of kills me that, I think, what are we paying, $1 million in the contract for Munis a year, for their, for them to, to stay on top of things? Is that going to be renegotiated?
So.
When it first came in, I think, as I recollect, it was, it was.
John, please.
John.
John knows the exact number.
The Munis cost each year is $230,000. The $1 million was the initial capital request for the implementation, and I believe that still will be an expenditure from, as part of the project.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. No, I appreciate the budget and all the work that went in. I want to commend your department staff and department heads for everything that they did in going into it. I know it's not an easy, easy task to try to keep, keep costs as low as possible for the residents of town and still provide just outstanding service that everybody does year in and year out. So I commend you all for what you do for the budget. And I look forward to 2020, what is it, 2066 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Kira.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel.
This is not a public hearing, but since we have such a great crowd in front of us, I figure we'll, why not? Let's open it up and see if anybody would like to make an initial comment, a question for the manager while we're here. Initial reactions? Not all at once. Well, I know that most of you are here just to hear the presentation. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I want to make sure I offer, gentleman in the back, please. If you don't mind, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Donald Lyskow, 16 School Street.
Good evening.
Good evening. I actually like it. It's very well thought out. You looked ahead to the coming years, and the, if you can pay for the second mega school, should that be an option, that'd be awesome, too. And if you can contribute some of the budget towards the first one, if that goes forward as well, that would also be good. So it's just, yeah, it looks good so far. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to be heard? A gentleman from the school committee.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Nicholas Golden, 453 Shawshine Avenue, I just want to echo Mr. Lyskow. Seeing a plan so long in advance, I think should tell folks that the selectmen and the town manager are really thinking ahead and trying to limit wasteful spending, right? Planning it out can actually avoid pitfalls. If we can reduce people's tax bills for a new school with capital planning, and if we can pay for the other side of town, for the folks on the west side, my wife and I are expecting our child will not benefit from a north school, but, nor would she benefit from west school, even in this plan. But for the families who are on the west side of town, I think that'd be great if we could, we could pay for it as you've lined out. So I really hope that you do this presentation at town meeting in May, or a version of it. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. Well, I know we've kidded a lot about 2066, but I just, my final thought on that, all kidding aside, is that, you know, Eric, I take that as that only seven months on the job, you could have easily just focused on this year and this year alone, and tried to survive your first budget here in town, but instead, I think it reflects how invested you are in this, in this job, in this community, and in the future, long-term. So I think I'll take that as a positive.
That's true. It really is.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much for that. We will move on to the next portion of our agenda, which is communications. You're all welcome to stay, of course. But if not, we'll wish you a good night.
Yes.
Okay. We have a few communications, if you don't mind taking us through. Mr. Slagel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first communication is memorandum from Valerie Gingrich, Director of Planning and Conservation, regarding the street acceptance. It's a recommendation for the Eleanor Drive extension, Murray Hill Circle and Eagle View The developer has initiated the street acceptance process, and the planning board requests that the select board schedule a meeting to initiate the street acceptance process and schedule a subsequent public hearing to lay out the way and endorse the street acceptance plan.
Thank you.
There are no questions on that. The second piece of communication is a letter from Gabriel Scholl and his family regarding Hanukkah of 2024. I'm sure the board remembers Mr. Scholl, who came in with his rabbi and made the request to have the Hanukkah menorah on the, on the common. I will, did say, I read it, and I teared up when I read the letter, so I won't be reading it aloud. But it's a lovely, a lovely letter from his family regarding, you can take it?
Yeah, no, I agree. I just wanted to point out, I appreciate the kind words from the rabbi, and I'm glad that it went well. It just stood out to me, as you mentioned, a very well-written, very thoughtful letter. And in all my years here on the board, no one's ever accused us of stealing someone's heart. That's how, that's how fondly they referred to us. So I appreciate those kind words, because we've been called a lot of things, but this is pretty nice. So thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, the third communication for this evening is a programming advisory from Xfinity. They're actually regarding the change in fuse, HD channel 1414, and FM HD channel 1638. They're going to be carrying them, and also that effective January 14th, 2025, NESN and NESN Plus will move from extra, popular TV, sports and news, and Xfinity TV starter Latino to digital preferred and ultimate TV. So if you want to get your Bruins and Red Sox games, check your plan.
Maybe just Bruins.
And that's the end of communications.
That's enough communications. Okay, we have nine board to consider this evening. The first is renewing a common victual license for a corporation doing business, Trezor Pizzeria, located at 296 Shawshine Avenue. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor? He's unanimous. Thank you. Number seven is a request from Ms. Aburnum of Wilmington-Tupsbury United Women in Faith to place a promotional sign at the Wilmington Methodist Church for a chocolate festival on the town common from Sunday, February 2nd through February 8th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Everybody is eager to jump on the chocolate here.
Chocolate.
Mr. West, thank you. Second. Seconded by Mr. De Palma.
Sure.
Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Chocolate's good, that's an easy one.
That's a good one. I agree. This next one has become an annual request. It is from Ms. Gwen Lawson of the Shawshene Tech School Committee to place signs for the graduating class of Shawshene on the common from May 27th through June 9th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Next up, we have a request from Ms. Amy Gray, Wilmington High School baseball team, to conduct a fundraising car wash at the municipal parking lot at 142 Middlesex Ave. on Saturday, April 26th, 2025, from 9:00 AM till noon time, with a rain date of Sunday, April 27th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Item number 10 is a request from Christine Canavere, who's the president of the Wilmington Farmers Market Association, to use the Town Common to conduct the farmers market on Sundays, June 8th, 2025, through October 5th, 2025, and they run from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
With.
Discussion? Sir?
With discussion.
Oh, with discussion, sure.
Yes, excuse me.
I'll second with discussions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Do you have discussion?
No.
Okay. Other than this first sign of summer, is the approval of the farmers market this summer. All right. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Next up is the signing, a board to consider signing a license agreement for the Wilmington's farmers market. Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Moving right along, item number 12 is board to consider the appointment of Kyle Monroe as a member of the Council on Arts for a term to expire in April 30th, 2027. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Monroe, for your volunteerism. Item number 13 is the board to consider appointing Stephanie Frontier as a member of the trustee of trust funds for a term to expire April 30th, 2027.
So moved.
Second. Oh, go ahead. Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. De Palma and seconded by Mrs. Misselli, and is there any discussion? Thank you to Stephanie for her willingness to do this. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Also, finally, item number 14 is a board to consider accepting of gift of $5,000 from the Lowell Five to support Wilmington youth. Cut off there. The youth of Wilmington.
Utes.
Is there a particular program? I'm sorry, might.
Youth Services.
Youth Services, all right. Thank you, Mr. Kira. Is there a second?
I got to get one in there.
I appreciate it. All those in favor? It is unanimous, and thank you to Lowell Five for their generous contribution. Next up, public comments. Would anyone like to be heard? Sir? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Bob Anwell, I'm president of the Board of Directors for Wilmington Community TV.
Welcome.
And at the last meeting that was held, we had, it had been discussed to try and get someone as a liaison from this board onto WCTV, and my assumption was that that was going to be discussed at this meeting, and I don't know if it was just excluded or if that decision had already been made and we weren't made aware of it.
Sure, yeah. So no, it hasn't been excluded, and no decision's been made. My recollection, correct me if I'm wrong here, anyone, is that we put it basically out there, if any member was interested, to reach out to myself or the manager, and we could add it to the agenda, having not yet heard from anybody that has yet to be placed on the agenda.
Okay, but is that, is it something that's still in consideration?
It most certainly is, yes. And so basically, wouldn't want to put it on for a vote if nobody was willing to step up at this time. You know, full disclosure, people have different commitments. You know, people are serving on other committees that are ongoing, and so someone may come forward in the near future, and if they decide to do that, then we will most definitely take it up for consideration.
And just to reiterate that it's a, it could be as a quarterly participation, participation versus the monthly board of director meetings. So it'd be up to the discrimination of the committee member as to how they'd want to do it.
That's good to know. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And as soon as, actually, as a courtesy to you, if someone was to come forward, we would notify you and let you know that it was going to come up for a vote.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
I just want to say, I need to withdraw, you know, my possibility of doing that, just because I have a conflict of interest, because in my personal life, we are a sponsor for WCTV with our family business, so I don't think it's appropriate for me to sit on that board, so.
Understandable. Thank you for sharing. Good night, sir. Thank you for being here. Would anyone else like to be heard? Public comments. Well, then, I guess we'll have to move on. All right, announcements. I'll start with one. Those of you who are not aware, last Thursday night, myself, Chairman John Darty of the Finance Committee, and our town moderator, Mr. Jonathan Eaton, met as the appointing group for the Finance Committee member. We had one applicant. We interviewed Mr. Anthony Nelson last night, last Thursday at Town Hall. We had an excellent interview. He came across as a very, very intelligent man, and he's lived in town with his young family and is, wants to step up and get involved. We had a great conversation, a great interview, and we were all equally impressed. He received a unanimous vote to be appointed to the Finance Committee, and the vacant seat that's been vacant for quite some time, and it's my understanding that he will be sworn in by the town clerk as early as tomorrow to begin his work on the Finance Committee. So I think that's good news, that it could be a great addition to an already great group of people. And I want to thank them, obviously, for the work that they're going to do over the next couple of weeks, with really important work, and it'll be some, some long nights, but we're really grateful that they're willing to do that. And then, secondly, for me, as I want to congratulate Ava Boudreaux, who are a member of the Wilmington High School class of 2025. She is the newest member of the 1,000-point club. She scored her 1,000th point on a free throw, as you may have seen on TV last week, and she's having a great year for the Wildcats. I want to congratulate her. I would imagine as a senior in high school, she's watching right now. So if she's watching, we're really proud of her, and we'll hopefully maybe she'll have a chance to celebrate her in the future, but certainly want to acknowledge her and want to wish her and her teammates great success for the rest of the year. But shout out to Ava, because that's awesome. Anybody else have announcements? All right. How about new business? Is there any new business? Mr. West.
I was just wondering, Mr. Jim, and I know that, and again, not that we want to be here till midnight on Monday night, certainly, but it would be nice if, you know, if we had either any of our boards or any of our commissions that could come out from time to time, and, you know, if there's any special projects they're working on or something that they want to, you know, spend a brief time in talking to the town about. So I don't know if there was a way to emphasize that, you know, we'd kind of like to hear from our various boards that, that meet, and they're doing good things, but we kind of, they're kind of like the unsung heroes that we don't hear about. So I don't know if there's, and again, I'm not saying that people have to come, but I'm just thinking that if there's opportunities that, gee, you know, X board is working on a specific project, or they, maybe they want Board of, Board of Selectmen help, or Town Management help or whatever, so just offered it out there that, you know, that people could, you know, come in and just, you know, discuss whatever their board or commission is doing.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's a good suggestion. The only thing I would add is that, in my experience, some of these volunteers, I think one of the last places they want to be here is here, another night when they're not already volunteering, although it is good. I'm not trying to downplay your idea, because I think it's a good one, but, you know, I want to be mindful that these people are volunteering sometimes multiple nights a week, couple nights a month, and, you know, another night out for them. You know, I don't disagree for, we've done it a couple different ways. We've had the chairs of those committees come in and update us as, as need be. We've got memos. We've had members who are, you know, liaisons to those committees update us. So, yeah, I'm not opposed to it, certainly wouldn't object to it if you wanted to bring somebody in particular forward, but I just always want to be mindful that we have a really hard time getting people to volunteer, and we're grateful that they do, and I want to be respectful of their time. So that would be the only counter that I would offer.
No, again, certainly, certainly understand that, you know, we are, we're all in various committees and have, you know, family and social lives as well and work, and, you know, but I'm just thinking that, you know, from time to time, if, you know, just offering it out there that if somebody, you know, a certain board or commission had something that, you know, hey, look, I'm kind of excited about this and wanted to, this is a good forum to let the, let the town know about, you know, something special that they're working on, or, or even about their committee, if they're looking, if, hey, we're shot two volunteers, we're shot two members, and we're looking for help, well, here's what we do, so it kind of gives you an idea of what we're about.
No, that's a good point, and I, you know, and I should apologize, I shouldn't just assume no one wants to come in here. So you're right, you're right. But the offer stands. If somebody out there is serving and there's work going on that you'd like to share with the community, certainly reach out to us, and we'll, we would love to help you get that word out.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Any other new business? Okay. If not, we'll move to important dates. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Important dates, it's, as you have mentioned, Mr. Chair, we have a robust Finance Committee agenda over the next few weeks, so we're going to be having several meetings starting tomorrow. January 28th, there's a Finance Committee here in Town Hall, Room 9, at 7 o'clock PM, for the FY 26 Budget Overview, Revenue, and General Government. Then on January 30th, there's a Finance Committee meeting here in Town Hall, Room 9, at 7 o'clock PM, to talk about the Department of Public Works. On February 3rd, there is a Building Reuse Committee. I believe this is the initial meeting of the Building Reuse Committee. We'll be here in Town Hall at Room 9, at 7:00 PM. On February 4th, we'll have another meeting of the Finance Committee here in Town Hall, Room 9, at 7 o'clock, to discuss the Public Buildings Department. February 6th, the Finance Committee meets here in Town Hall, Room 9, 7 o'clock PM, to discuss Recreation, Library, and the Historical Commission. February 7th is the last day to submit a petitioned warrant article for inclusion on the warrant for the annual town meeting, which is happening May 3rd, 2025. On February 10th, we have our next Select Board meeting here at Town Hall, Room 9, at 7 o'clock PM. Then the next day, the 11th, we have a Finance Committee here in Town Hall, Room 9, at 7, to discuss Veteran Services and Elderly Services. And then on February 13th, we have a Finance Committee meeting here in Town Hall, Room 9, at 7 o'clock PM, to discuss Planning and Conservation, Building Inspector, Board of Appeals, and the Board of Health. On February 17th, that's President's Day, town offices are closed. We are taking a week off from the FinCom meetings, because that's also school vacation week. And then on February 24th, we have another Select Board meeting here at Town Hall, Room 9, at 7 o'clock PM. And then the next day, we take up the FinCom meetings again, here in Town Hall, Room 9, on the 25th, at 7 o'clock PM, for the Information Technology and the Town Clerk's Offices. On February 27th, the Finance Committee meets at Town Hall, Room 9, at 7 o'clock PM, to discuss the Police Department, Public Safety, Central Dispatch, and the Fire Department. Then on March 6th, the FinCom meets here at Town Hall, Room 9, at 7 o'clock PM, to discuss the Wilmington Public Schools and the Shawshene Technical School District. On March 10th, there will be another Select Board meeting here at Town Hall, Room 9, at 7 o'clock PM. And then on March 18th, there's a Finance Committee Planning Board Public Hearing at Town Hall Auditorium at 7 o'clock PM. March 24th, the Select Board meets at Town Hall, Room 9, at 7 o'clock PM. And then finally, April 16th is the last day to register to vote for the annual town election, the annual town meeting. The Town Clerk's Office is open until 5:00 PM. That's on April 16th.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Manager. And there's a lot of important dates there. I just want to reiterate the fact that these are all on our website. In addition, in the coming days, so will the budget presentation that you heard tonight, the documentation that we received, and thanks to our friends at WCTV, this meeting will be, has been recorded and will be rebroadcast on their channel. Thank you for that. And finally, this evening, our salute to service this evening will go to Mr. Daniel F. Sullivan, Jr., who served us in the United States Army, and his awards include the Army Service Ribbon and Marksmanship Badge with M16 rifle bar. Dan owns the Lacrosse Loft here in town and has been instrumental in building the lacrosse community here in Wilmington, including organizing a local hero's lacrosse game to collect supplies and send them to the troops who are currently serving overseas. So tonight, we thank Dan for his service, and we salute him. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Seconding it. All those in favor?